Thank you, Mr. President. Councilors, you see the resolution in front of you. Concerns are mitigation plan. I know Mr. Mayor, Mr. Zick, and also Mr. Maxwell are here to speak. And Mayor, I'll go to you first. You're the top dog.
Okay, thank you, Councilman and Council. This is a hazard mitigation plan that was done locally here. You may recall about a year ago, we started having meetings over at COTC to talk about what all types of different hazards that would befall Knox County. And in particular, each of the villages had their chance to identify their own, and the city had our chance to identify ours. And so, the plan that is before you is reflective of all of that discussion that took place from local leaders. While this is a FEMA-approved or federally-approved plan, it doesn't mean that the feds are telling us what we have to do. We have decided what we need to do, what risks are most inherent in our community. And they gave their seal of -- after they looked everything over, they gave their seal of approval. So, without getting into too much of the details, I would like to turn it over to Mark Maxwell, our AMA Director, to explain just a little bit more. And if there are any specific questions, perhaps Mr. Zick and Mr. Maxwell and I could answer them for you.
Thanks, Mayor. So, we -- this is not the first hazard mitigation plan that we've had. Our current plan, or our should say, because this is current now, our previous plan expired back in May. And that plan like this one is when we try to bring the whole community together to identify, basically, what are the biggest hazards, vulnerabilities, that we need to be concerned about in Knox County? With our previous plans, we focused on natural hazards only. And with this plan, we moved from natural hazards to what we refer to as a all-hazard mitigation plan. So, we get into things now like infrastructure failure and things of that nature. So, that's kind of the big change from the previous plan to this plan. We also spent a lot more time this -- in this revision, meeting with local government officials. And I shouldn't really say government officials, because we opened this up to the entire community. So, I guess "community leaders" might be a better statement, whether it's just a member of the public. But, you know, these meetings were open to absolutely everyone to get their input. And so, the first part of the process was to identify what are the hazards, risk, vulnerabilities that we face. And I was looking at it kind of holistically at Knox County, but again, we met specifically with each of the villages, as well as the city. And so, that gave the city, anybody who wanted to make comment on behalf of the city, the opportunity to talk about what they felt the biggest hazards were. And so, after a lot of discussion and comments from the public, we identified that infrastructure failure was probably the number-one hazard for the city of Mount Vernon. So, if you think over the last year, how many times has the electric gone off? You know, and that's kind of what focused around that, whether it's a windstorm, you know, in the spring thunderstorms, or a winter or an ice storm. All four seasons seem to impact our weather in central Ohio. And then below that was flooding, and below that was tornado and severe storms. So, that's the first part, is to identify what is it we want to focus on. And then when we really work to get a lot of impact and input from our local partners is when we start identifying strategies. So, what things can the city of Mount Vernon do to lessen the impact of those things in the city? And so, that was the focus on the follow-up meetings that we had, is trying to identify what are those strategies that we really want to look at, broad-based, that are going to have the best impact? And that's where it was really good to have, again, those community leaders, and especially, you know, the city officials that joined us, who truly have that knowledge base, to help identify those strategies. And then the next step along that, beyond that, once those strategies are established, is to then work to identify specific projects. So, bottom line, the key to this is, you know, this is kind of a strategic-level plan, if you will. It comes up with strategies that have been identified, and it's pretty much up to now the elected officials to say, hey, this is what we want to go with, this is what we want to fund. And the kind of the good part about this is, if for whatever reason, there are strategies identified that you don't have the funding for, or they just don't make the priority list, there's no downside to not accomplishing those strategies. So, really, there's only positive things that come out of this plan. It does make it eligible for the city to apply for federal dollars to do these types of mitigation projects. So, that's kind of trying to round it up in a nutshell, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions? Tony, you see anybody's hand up?
Samantha.
Samantha, oh, she's just -- I don't see the icon. I just see her.
I'm pushing the wrong buttons.
My bad, I was looking for the icon for once.
I know. So, is there a place that we can read this? Is this a plan that's put together that we can review?
Yeah, it was sent out for review. It was on the website. It is on the other, the -- trying to remember the name of it, Resource Solutions website right now. I just got the electronic versions today, and we're going to get those up on the AMA website as well. But again, I just got that thumb drive that had all that information on it today.
Okay, great, thank you.
I will email the link to that Resource Solutions out right now.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we had to pass this tonight because of timelines?
We have to have it passed by the end of the month, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Mark, Mr. Maxwell?
There's really no deadline for the city to pass it as such. I mean, there's no penalty if we don't. We just, it's obviously just convenient to get everybody to pass it as quickly as possible, because we have to submit all those through the state, back to the federal government for them to file.
I just, for some reason, I was thinking we had by the end of the...
That was the initial request, is to try to get it done by the end of the month.
Okay.
So, we'll take it to its third reading. Julia?
Oh, I was just going to ask if we could have time to read it. So, that's perfect. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
The legislation, specifically, the original ask, which is in the emergency clause of the legislation, was that it be passed by the 30th, so we could clearly give this another reading, and then debate it next council session.
Mayor, if there's questions from Council, after, do you want to address it to you?
That's fine.
Does everybody have it written down where we can find what we need to read? Or do we -- do we need that? Mayor, can we email those to us again?
I believe Mr. Zick just did that.
He's better at it than I am. Any other questions?
If I may, just real quick, if you go to the table of contents, you can quickly identify the sections of the plan that reflect specifically to the city, so you don't have to read the entire document if you don't want to.
Anything else?
I received mine at 6:08, so Mr. Zick's right on the ball. So, we're good.
Mr. President, no more questions. I think I can close this meeting.
Okay. We're going to adjourn the planning and zoning with Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell, sorry.
We're going to move on to employing community relations with Ms. Scholes about ordinance number 2020-31. Ms. Scholes?
Thank you, Mr. President. 2020-31 is the piece of legislation that I have on the table that would give us the opportunity to add an HR person. I spoke with the mayor and Mr. Zick last week, and we went over their priority for hiring. So, I would like them to kind of fill in the rest of Council about that conversation.
And I'll jump in there on that. So, about a meeting or two ago, Council did ask, given a lot of the needs that the mayor and I have identified when it comes to city staffing, that we provide Council with a bit of a priority. And we've taken time the last few weeks to really sit down and think hard about, you know, what we need now versus what we can afford to wait on. And, you know, I think I'll agree with Councilwoman Scholes. I think this HR director is a huge priority for herself, the mayor, and myself. But, I also recognize that it is one field in which myself and Mr. Scott kind of split the workload, and really have the knowledge and capability to bridge the gap until we can fill this position. So, you know, I think even Councilwoman Scholes was a bit taken aback that this is such a big priority for us, but that we are willing to postpone it for some other priorities. So, I'm going to give a rundown of a lot of the topics we've discussed since the beginning of the year, and try and put those in a good order for Council, so that you can consider how you'd like to proceed when it comes to filling some of these roles that we need. The first thing that the mayor and I have talked a lot about is, you know, this newer discussion about community advocate is really a passion of ours, and something that we see as the future of providing services in our city, and something that we do want to pursue. That being said, I know the mayor is working hard to identify outside funding to support that. So, you know, really, the number-one priority that we see, the need for Council to provide full funding at this time, would be the additional Assistant Law Director for Mr. Boren's office. We came to this, pretty much this determination, first, obviously, by determining that both Mr. Scott and myself could carry the HR burden, as these two positions have been doing for many years. And I do have a background in bargaining, labor relations, things like that. So, the second thing is, what is going to be the most value to our city departments? You know, we have a pretty overworked engineering department at this time, I believe, and one that does lean heavily on legal advisement in order to get their job done. So, you know, where an HR director probably does much less to benefit our engineering department, a law director would really relieve a huge burden. And I know, just recently, they've had to reach out for outside legal counsel, which, if you know professional services, when we contract those out, become quite expensive. So, you know, the mayor and I really came to the determination that we, if there's something we need to move on this year, it's going to be that Assistant Law Director position. We've also had quite a bit of discussion about reorganization of our parks, buildings, lands, and streets departments. I didn't bring legislation today, but if Council is open, I plan to reintroduce that legislation next council meeting. I'm talking with Mr. Hinkle, who's kind of assumed a de facto Public Works Director role. You know, we're making things work. I think he's doing a lot of good work in getting to know those other departments, and also identifying the needs. But, you know, we're coming to the point where we need to make a decision, one way or the other, on Public Works. Obviously, I still believe that that is the correct direction to go. I have sat down with Mr. Scott. You know, there's two scenarios here. There's a scenario where we basically go down a headcount in that department, which we are very confident we can do with both our internal staff, and by reducing that headcount, we would be able to fund it with existing funds. And if we do decide to move forward on considering that again next meeting, I would ask Mr. Scott to probably dig a little deeper into those numbers. If we decided to bring on a new maintenance worker to keep our headcount the same, it would carry a slight cost, and it's something that we could consider doing next budget cycle if we choose, partially because we probably won't have a maintenance worker test on the books until November, December, anyway. So, I'm hoping, and Mayor, correct me if I'm missing anything, but that's really the priorities here. I would like to see us do something with our law director this year. I'd also like to see us make a decision, one way or the other, on Public Works reorganization.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add, just in terms of understanding how we came to that prioritization, is making moves necessary to protect and support the frontline staff first, before we add another level of management, in that I think it's very important that we make sure that the frontline is taken care of first. And so, that's where, Rick, we still need the HR director, don't get me wrong. But, in terms of prioritization, as Mr. Zick said, I'm going to be seeking everywhere I can outside funding for the community advocate. I think that's, I am committed to doing whatever I can to make that happen. Internally, within our current working budget, the Assistant Law Director makes the most sense, just simply because the engineering department is terribly overworked right now. And we need help in that, we need help there, plus we need someone who can spearhead some zoning, much-needed zoning updates.
In the position you're talking about, Public Works, Mr. Zick, are you talking about limiting a position by attrition, by riffing, or how will that one position become vacant so you can fill another position?
So, the position is essentially already vacant when Mr. Carpenter left, so we wouldn't be filling his position. We'd be replacing him with a single director, and then promoting some assistant directors to help support him. That being said, it's another one of those already leaned departments that, you know, we should have a discussion about trying to get a maintenance worker in there to fill Mr. Carpenter's, you know, absence. Just to make it oversimplified, maybe, you know, we can basically assume the cost probably of the salary for another maintenance worker. It's really the insurance, should they choose to take a single or family plan, that is kind of an unknown, and could be about a $26-plus thousand expense in addition, so.
Tanner has his hand up.
Yeah, Brian, hello. Wanted to know, your department is absolutely overworked. Wanted to know if you had any idea on the ballpark figure, how much we would be on the hook for if, God forbid, some of these projects that we're working on did lapse, and we would be forced to pay some of these grants back?
Well, so, the things that we have on hold right now related to legal, you know, aren't necessarily tied to the grants. The project on Clinton Road, we put that on hold, because we have no idea whether the sewer lines there, it was built when it was in the township, there's no easements.
Right.
We need to replace that, and we have an EPA order to replace that.
Before you start talking about stormwater, because that's where your conversations always lead.
The project's on hold, because I need to know where the easements are. That's the -- so, I've got three projects that I have put on hold, because I need assistance for easements, or rights of entry, stuff like that.
That's my question. So, because of the backlog in the Assistant Law Director's off, or in the Law Director's office, you can't get to these things, which causes this clog in the pipeline, no pun intended.
Right. Now, I've attempted to hire a consultant to do this work, but because of the transactional nature of the real estate market right now, I have been for three months trying to hire a local company to help do this work, and they don't have time to do it either.
Gotcha.
So, I'm stuck. I was gonna, I mean, you know, it's not something I can just get an intern to do, like, it actually needs a professional service. So, we've called around, like, I can't, I can't get a local firm. The next step is to go to a Columbus firm, and you know what that's going to do to the budget.
And so, this kind of opens the door to the conversation that Mr. Boren and I had last week. He's going to put together a list for us, so that we better understand, like, what all is on his plate from the city's perspective, so that we can see what's out there waiting for him to do. You know, maybe what's been on there so long that either Mr. Ball found someone else to manage it, or it's just a project that we're not going to do right now. But I know that he's working on that, so we can have a better, a better concept of all the things that are, that are waiting for him to do, so that we can kind of get that clearer picture that we asked for earlier this year. So, hopefully, we have that sometime this week or early next week, so that we can do that. I'd also like to have Mr. Scott talk to us a little bit about financially where we are, to be able to move forward with Assistant Law Director, and like, the total costs for that.
Thank you, Ms. Scholes. Council, I did do some work for Ms. Scholes in regards to this topic, to see where we would be at if we could begin the start of having a new Assistant Law Director. Currently, at the end of August, in our general fund, we were utilizing only 40% of our appropriated appropriations, which is very good, because the maximum you would have wanted to have used would have been 67%. So, we're doing extremely well in regards to cost containment. With that measure, and because we're doing that diligent work, I did some calculations to help Ms. Scholes figure out where the total would be. And of course, for now, we only need about maybe three months' worth to finish out this year. Quick calculations with information that you guys have already had from Mr. Boren in regards to what the compensation would be. I used the $50,000 number, because that's what's been going on in conversation. So, if it changes, we'll have to do differently, but we're going to use that for conversation tonight. So, that with the pension Medicare workers' comp, and health insurance tallies up to a total of just a little over $83,000. Actually, it's $83,031 for a full 12-month period. So, I'm assuming that probably Mr. Boren may or may not have a list of candidates at this time. And even if he did, and wanted to make a selection, I'm proposing that probably, it would be probably about the first of October before the person might be able to come. If they have a current position that they're working at, they may not be able to leave so quickly. So, for conversations in that direction, I would say that we would look for a cost out of the general fund to run for three months of the rest of this year, being October, November, and December. And then we would have to then factor in that cost on a 12-month period for the new budget cycle in 2021. Ms. Scholes?
Thank you, sir. Terry, can you also talk to us a little bit about the possibility, I'm assuming that we're going to be able to bring HR in next year, and how that will fit into the budget for '21?
It would be proposed that we would try to assemble that, at least in a draft form. And if we can get the general fund to balance with those costs being factored in, then obviously, that would be a reasonable assumption that that would be a go. If we are not able to do that, then we have to then sit down and decide what measurements do we need to do in order to make it work, and what items in the general fund that we could reduce for one reason or another, and not be short-sighted in regards to continuing with your HR position that you've been talking about most of this whole year, actually.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
I do. And where are we with legislation 2020-31? Are you pulling that, and you're looking at a new piece of legislation? Where are we going here?
Well, I mean, I kind of wanted to just introduce this conversation tonight and see what to do. I mean, at the very least, we can give the current legislation a second reading, because we'll have to draft legislation for the Assistant Law Director positions. So, I think, I mean, we have some wiggle room in here, but we definitely need to get input from the rest of Council.
Tanner?
Mr. Salyers?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, Rob, back when I voted no to keep this conversation going, back in March, one of the conversations that we talked about was that, I believe, last year, we spent $38,000, something like that, on outside legal fees, which would have offset the cost. Do you remember that figure?
That was, I just think, for the, out of the Safety Service Director. I suspect that Brian added some additional cost to that.
So, that would offset the cost of what we're talking about here. Assistant Law Director, if we have that person in your office, working on these, working on these projects, we would spend less money.
Significantly, yes.
And that, you can't assume we're going to eliminate all outside legal counsel?
Correct.
I would also, that this position was budgeted, and...
Yeah, my second question is that we can't forget that the HR position here, I mean, we can have another committee meeting on the Assistant Law Director's position, of course, but the HR position is specifically what we're talking about here. And I'd like to know specifically, maybe Matthias can jump in, and Chief, you can jump in, and Brian. Who's handling HR right now? So, if somebody comes with an HR-related complaint, is it Terry? Is that you?
And Rick.
I don't know who's...
And Rick.
...right now. Rick, do you feel qualified to handle HR positions? Are you comfortable doing that?
Yeah, you know, during my time at the Knox County 911 Center, I was solely responsible for all labor relations, employee discipline, contract negotiation. So, yes, of any of the positions we're considering now, my skill set extends into that. As Mr. Scott mentioned, you know, he does a lot with, obviously, labor negotiations, because he has that historical knowledge for the last 20-plus years. He also deals with benefit administration. In my office, we currently already handle all family medical leave, that's Lindsay's kind of role, as well as she takes on workers' comp. So, all of the functions of HR are currently controlled by our two offices. And yeah, I'm confident in my ability to continue dealing with labor relations and disciplinary matters.
I mean, I think they both do a great job. It's the other things that we need to move forward with, with an HR person that we could...
This was not questioning the capabilities of anybody, but I would like to know, you know, we're talking about adding on an HR director, and we've been talking about it, and it was a priority. Well, I've had several people ask, you know, who does that now? If somebody does something that would fall under an HR position, who's handling it now? And why have we been talking about it if we've, if we've been comfortable with the way this situation's working?
And I will, I mean, I want to give Council full information. There are things that will be delayed without having an HR person, and it's not any delay that I think is an issue. I think these topics have been delayed for a number of years already, so what's another six months? But, you know, we need a real comprehensive policy manual overhaul, and that would have been one of the things I tasked an HR manager with. We need a comprehensive, and Terry's mentioned this to me a few times, a comprehensive orientation program, some kind of onboarding and training. So, and frankly, we could do a better job when we do go outside to look for talent of having somebody that specializes in that, to really broaden our net for employees. So, you know, there are things that this position is going to bring a lot of value to the city on, but, you know, unfortunately, we're in the mode of having to decide what we can live without right now, so.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. I took a chance and raised my hand in a proper way. Mr. Zick answered part of my question about the policies, because I keep hearing there's policies we've got to rewrite, and how important it is for that HR person. Mr. Scott, I have kind of a question. We're talking, one, possibly two positions, fund the one for three months this year, because we're looking good on the way we're spending our money. I see we don't have time to have a full financial report for you, but I doubt it's much improved over the last one, and probably looking at the same downfall that you originally talking about for the end of the year.
That's correct.
All right, so, and every day I hear the news, whether whose news you want to believe, and you look at our finances, if this thing continues another year with our finances the way they're going, south instead of north... And you look at our finances, if this thing continues another year with our finances, the way they're going south instead of north. We're probably going to have some changes to do next year, I assume. And the only thing it keeps, and I I know we need people. Don't get me wrong. And I'm torn over HR person over Assistant Law Director. But one thing Dave Glass told me that I did remember, one of the few things. Was it's much easier to hire somebody than it is to get rid of feelings and everything else. And that's my biggest concern. And Terry. I know you don't have a crystal ball. But if this was November of next year and it's still going south like it is now, aren't we going to have some difficult decisions to make? Not November, September.
I don't, I don't propose that twenty twenty one is going to be quite like twenty twenty is. I do have some. Outside resources that have been keeping me abreast as to some things going on in the community. Directly connected with us, not at the global world. But certainly directly communicating information to me in regards to us locally here. And with that information, it would appear. And this is very credible, I would say as well. That we would be looking at some increase in our revenues that we are not experiencing during twenty twenty. So that I I'm confident and it would be. A very reasonable and probably substantial. Number that we would be talking about.
So you're comfortable this at least one position?
The one, the one I concurred that with Ms. Scholes earlier today that I felt like that if we started with just one. And and tried to work our way through that. It may very well be that you don't get to your HR maybe until twenty twenty two perhaps. But I think it's it's a slow motion that we should look at. And I don't think we should. Jump in headfirst because that I I would not, I would not advise this council or any council. To take on a burden that large and not have any real clearance. That we're going to be able to support that at this time.
Just real quick, contract out of the lawyer's office, we have it, we do that every year, right? We've always contracted something. This isn't just right now that we're contracting services, correct?
That's correct. We we do use outside legal counsel. For other items and substantially, I can tell you, and we'll be coming up later this fall and early into next year. We will have labor relations, obviously, because our contracts are expiring at the end of this year. And we do use labor relations for that purpose. As well as we also use them throughout the year when we have issues that really are a bit more complex. And and depending upon the nature of what they are would determine whether or not we're comfortable enough to handle those in house. But some things that are a bit more complex and have a little bit more resilience to them. We would, we would use outside counsel for those types of items.
Julia. Thank you. And thank you, Terry, for that. That was, that actually answered part of my question, I think. But um. What I want to figure out is we've talked about a lot of positions tonight. Are we folks, we're going to focus on hiring or posting a position, just one? And I'm, and so do we need to figure out which one? So we're between the Assistant Law Director and the HR position, but. We may be leaning one way rather than the other. I'm just trying to figure this out logistically in my head.
I think you're correct on that assumption, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, question I have is I'm a very big proponent of preventive maintenance and making sure that we're we're taking care of things down the line. So we don't push that burden on down. I appreciate what the staff is doing and cutting expenses. Are we doing many things that are that are hurting preventive maintenance that we're going to have to pay the piper later?
Not that I'm aware of. We we continue to have, at least I do, and I'm sure Mr. Zick does as well. Have daily, nearly daily conversations with Mr. Henkel in the public works area. And and with that, I just met with him on Friday in regards to projects and things that he's needing to get maintenance work done. We still continue to have resources and appropriations to do that with. So at this time, I don't see that we have any real large deferments that we are pushing into. The future that we're not taking care of at this time.
Thank you. We're out of time. We have something quick, Mr. Mr. Tanner?
Yeah, yeah, close enough, Bruce. I just have a, I guess, a quick question. We don't plan on putting any more funds in the. Emergency rainy day fund next year, do we?
Currently, that is a requirement under the current ordinance unless this council wants to make a different. Assumption on that, you would have to give a redirection for for that to happen. Otherwise, we would be required to do so, yes.
What's the percentage that we have to put?
Five percent of the total expenditures in the general fund for the current year of twenty twenty.
And we did that this year as well, correct?
We did, yes.
What was the figure on that?
Approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
There's your salary.
Ms. Scholes, your time is about up. You have anything else?
No, sir. Mr. Hillier, I'm grateful for the few minutes that you gave us from your previous meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourning the employing community relations. We're going to move now on to utilities with Mrs. Woods. Discussing emergency repairs, the wastewater treatment plant digesters. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to put Brian back on center stage again because the sum total of what I know is that the recent storm did some damage to our digesters. So Brian.
Not quite. Basically, the age, the age of the digesters. And the fact that the wastewater plant does not have a rainy day fund. Kind of puts us in a spot where we're, you know, we have the stainless steel insides to the digester. And I think we've reported earlier that the number two digester has, the screen is broken loose and the lid hit the screen. We are looking at a holistic repair project where we would take one digester at a time apart and fix it. What I'm getting reports from the plant and I'll look over to Matthias, I think that Jason's wasn't able to join us tonight. But we really can't wait to do the the rehabilitation. We're probably going to have to go to an emergency repair and then also do the rehabilitation later. So I don't know, Matthias, if you want to jump in at this point.
Yes. We're trying to get Birch to get us a quote. We need to actually take one of the digesters, the one that's broke, out of service. And actually clean the inside of it and remove all the sludge that is there. And while we're doing that. The engineering department and the consultants can get all their measurements and pictures, whatever else they need to do while it's down. And that way we can have exact dimensions of everything that they need to do with that project. While it's down, they're also going to get the measurements for the screen. So that we can possibly have a temporary screen made to fix the one that is broke. This, I've already set aside the money for the cleaning, or at least what we think we'll need. We have that on hand. We do not have enough money for the whole project. I am on positive of that.
Yeah. So at this point, if we ever rehabilitate both digesters. And make some minor upgrades while we're in the digester building, we're looking at a one point. Five million dollar project out of next year's budget. So we're going to have to figure out how to pay for that. Because I believe Matthias, your annual budget for wastewater is less than four million dollars.
Yes, less than four.
So you're looking at more than a quarter of next year's budget to make these repairs. Now, again, if we break it into two projects that'll lower the number, but it'll increase the cost because. Just to have the contractor show up with the proper equipment, it's going to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. So if we have two show up fees. And we have, you know, some phase construction and we break that over two years, that will cost more. So. We can continue to allow the digestion to limp along. But if we go to a catastrophic failure, we will be hauling this sludge to a landfill. At probably close to ninety to a hundred dollars a ton.
So Matthias, sorry, Brian. Matthias, you said you have money set aside for cleaning it, the new screen. Is that in addition to the one point five million, those funds?
I doubt, that would be what we have to do now to prepare to do the project. We that is to do the temporary repairs to get us till this project can be done.
And you think you have a.
I think I have enough. I have enough for the cleaning. As long as the screen does not hurt too bad, I can, I probably have enough for that.
And what's the cleaning cost?
We're looking between forty five and a hundred thousand dollars. And we don't know what we, we won't know until we actually start cleaning. At what point? The amount in there is so trashy, we will not be able to land apply it. It will then have to be taken to a landfill. So whenever we get to that point, that point could be twenty five percent of the way, fifty percent of the way, or seventy five. But the cost, as soon as you hit that point, then the costs start going up because landfilling it costs, like Brian said, a lot more per ton. Yep. So. Does that answer, is that, is that answering your question?
It did, it did. One other thought that crossed my mind, how often does this have to be done? Has this been quite a long time since this has been done?
Yes, I tried to look, I tried to think back. It's been over ten years. That's the last time we did clean one of these. The screens have never been replaced. We have taken normally clean the screens every couple of years. And that's, you know, when we found that the one, when we took it apart to actually clean it, we found it had broken. And so this, you know, these two digesters, all the the heavy solids that come in the flow here. So like right now, we're running two and a half million gallons roughly. We're going to probably put fifteen thousand gallons into the, into one of these digesters. And then we have to try and run that through the screens to get that number down. And then, you know, reduce the volatile solids in that sludge before we can send it back to the the sludge holding tanks. But we can't do that if we can't de-water it through these screens.
You seem a little hesitant about whether or not you had enough funds for the screen. Do you have an estimate in your head of what you think that screen is going to cost?
Brian, does Travis have an idea?
No, we, so we have the original drawings and the manufacturer no longer exists. They've been bought out, I think, five times. And so they don't even really know what's inside it. So we have to drain it, measure it. And we either would have to get like a local job shop or go back to the current manufacturer. And try to have this fabricated. It's all stainless steel. So we do not, no one's been able to give us even a ballpark price until. We don't know what what the weave size is on the screen. There's a lot of things we don't know until we get the lid off and get inside of it. We don't know if the brackets have broken from the wall. I mean, the reason the screen is damaged is it moved to the side and the lid hit it. So you know, there's a lot of things that, because when they did their temporary repair that they tried. We didn't have it completely empty. So there's a lot of unknowns as far as what's going on in the tank. The mixing system that's in the tank has completely failed. And we are not going to try to do a temporary repair. That that has to be done as a, as a complete rehabilitation.
But Matthias, it sounds like that is not in your budget. And there's no legislation being presented that on this tonight, but am I thinking you guys are coming forward to say we need to find the money for this somewhere?
The the project, the major project, yes, we will be coming to you. We'll probably be bringing that from commission next month. But I have, I have enough to get started on these temporary repairs. And I I have some left in plant equipment. And in plant maintenance, I believe, may cover the screen. I cannot guarantee that. But it's not like I I can choose. It has to be done. We've been putting it off for too, too long, waiting on the results that we have got back so far from the engineers to get to this point.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the question. Where do you think we're going to do, we're going to go for a million and a half? I mean. Terry?
Terry's going to have to, we're going to have to figure out how to, you know, get a loan.
Is that what you think, it's loaning, borrowing?
And then we'll have to raise rates.
Which should be something that counsel should be considering anyhow because, as you can understand from the operations of this facility. It it does take, it's takes a lot of money to run. And in order to keep things maintained. We'll have to ask counsel to give some serious, very serious consideration in that area as well. It's one thing to borrow money, but if you don't have the money to pay it back with, that makes it a little challenging to borrow money.
Is that something that'll be more of a discussion come budget time? Or do you think that'll be more of a discussion on how to pay it back this year?
I would have concern that we would start that conversation right now and continue on with it until we can find a solution for it.
And so how quickly do you guys think you'll have numbers of what this is going to cost? You're saying you're struggling to get that number.
They were supposed to actually get back with us this week with the price for the cleaning. So we're waiting on that as soon as I have that. So I was hoping to have it before commission. And then I would have those numbers to bring to you through the utility committee.
Yeah. And once we get it cleaned and we can get inside and get some measurements, then we have several different, at least two different. Folks that will get estimates from on the the screen repair. So it's kind of a one, one, two punch, I guess. We have to get inside to get a reasonable estimate.
These units are nearly thirty years old, counsel, from their original nineteen ninety two, when they were first installed. They still have bonding certificate showing that we had those put in in nineteen ninety two, at least part of them.
Terry, those are the, those are the holding tanks that were put in in ninety two. These are the digestors from.
Digestors, okay.
Those were nineteen fifty something, I believe.
Okay, alright.
Have that number.
Gotcha, thank you.
These are the ones in front from the old part of the plant.
Oh, yes, okay.
There was some major rehab done. The the compressor suitor was put on, I believe, at the same time that the diet, the holding tanks were done.
What part with the bar rack and blowers be, we did that as as a bonded project or a few several years ago. What what part would that play into this or not at all?
Nothing. The blowers are secondary and the bar rack is primary. So.
Alright, thank you.
Just for my own curiosity, when you go down Cougar Drive right now, the odor seems stronger than it has in the past. It has anything to do with with these digesters? Is that just coincidence?
Here, last couple of days, we've just had a lot of septic hoppers come in. It may have a little bit to do with it, but it's. The temperature is going to change here quickly. Like it's going to get cold tonight. So the bugs are going to become unhappy pretty soon until they get accustomed to it. So we're going to have that. Changeover of. Smell. We have that in the fall when the temperatures go and then we normally have one in the spring. Normally doesn't last too long.
Okay, I just noticed it recently and it has been stronger.
Ms. Scholes.
So when, when we shut down this for cleaning, I mean, how does that impact? Like the whole usage of it? And I mean, because you can't stop getting.
You're exactly right. It cannot stop. Every twelve hours it gets fed. We have two of them right now. One of them isn't working properly, so we're managing to limp along. If the other one goes down, then we will have major problems and major expenses. More so than what we're talking about right now.
Yeah. Yeah. So Samantha, the digester number two has been damaged. We're, we're probably going to have to do some cleaning on digester number one. If digester number one goes down, then we're trucking all of this product to a landfill.
Hey, Mrs. Woods, we're about due for our our public hearing. Are you finished with this committee meeting?
I am. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to join, adjourn the utilities committee meeting. It's just about six fifty and it is exactly six fifty. And we're going to go to the public hearing on rezoning of thirteen fifty Yaga Road. From R three to Office Institutional, the planning and zoning, Mr. Hillier. This is a public hearing and it is being recorded and by Spire Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel. Thank you, Mr. President. Council, I think this is the first public hearing we've had by Zoom. So bear with me. This is a half hour public hearing concerning the property, five parcels of land on Yaga Road, Country Club Retirement Center. It's in the, it went to municipal planning in response to a letter from Mayor Mavis this, in December of twenty nineteen. Everybody received all this information, but I'm doing it for the public. The mayor had asked for four of the parcels to be rezoned to its proper zoning. He felt it wasn't zoned correctly. When we did all the zoning, he wanted them changed to the four to Office Institutional. At the same time, Holland Development decided to ask for a small parcel off the tip to be changed office institutional as well. That's off the southern tip. It's council, it's on your, uh, page thirty-two of the information you got in your, your packet. It's very clearly how it is done on the map. Tonya, were we gonna do that?
I'm trying.
Okay, you probably have my computer, sorry. The rezoning of the R two property has come up before. There was a rather lengthy public hearing then and several neighbors spoke against the, the zone rezoning of that small tip. But we are talking about the five parcels and municipal planning did agree unanimously to accept the rezoning of all five parcels, not just the four. Mr. Hawkins, I'm gonna briefly, this is how I planned on doing the meeting. Let me know if, um, if you wanna step in. It is a thirty minute meeting. I'd like to hear from those in support of the decision from municipal planning. Is anybody here, Tanya from Holland, do you know of? Brian, do you see anybody that maybe wanna speak?
I see somebody named Donald. Is, are you, uh, on mute? Are you here in support? I just, it seemed like he was trying to talk. No, maybe not.
He is muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that button.
I'm Donald, just a second. Are you with Holland management?
Yes, I am. I'm the architect there.
Okay, I'll go ahead and finish doing the introduction. I'll go right back to you, okay?
Okay.
We'll hear from those supporting and then anybody speaking in opposition. If you know how to raise your hand on the screen, please do so. I'm asking, uh, the president and Tanya to help me out there because I'm not gonna change screens. So feel free. Mr. President, I assume these are for, speaking four minutes at a time? Is that what we're doing?
It's a public hearing, it's up to you. You know, that, that makes sense.
I think they'll have several speakers. We can always go back. If, Mr. Hawkins, I'll let you, uh, do the timer if we need to. Council, at the end then, we'll be able to ask any questions. This is only the second reading tonight, so we will have time if need to, to discuss this at another committee meeting before the third and final reading. Are we ready, Bruce?
We're ready. Am I camera ready?
Alright. Donald, be, introduce yourself and your connection here. Please go ahead and speak. I remember you at municipal planning. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, my name is Donald Funk. Uh, I'm the architect with Holland Development. And I basically, the one that submitted it along with Jack Holland, who's the owner of the property. And we had a meeting back last year with previous mayor, Mavis. And it was determined at that time that the properties, the parcel, the four parcels that are further north on the site were never zoned properly after the town, after, after they were township properties and they were incorporated into the city years ago. So basically what it amounted to was that the nursing home assisted living facility was not allowed, is not allowed in an R two district. So it was suggested at that time that the city was going to change it to an O I to match the adjacent properties to the west and to the east of it. And that would allow this kind of use, the nursing home assisted living in an O I use. So that at least we were meeting zoning requirements. What we had done is we had looked at the existing footprint of the building that we have currently. And then we also had looked at a couple areas. If you see to the south, there's like a Y, inverted Y shape of the existing building. And our, our overall master plan is to basically complete, uh, flip that, complete it. Are you still there?
Yes, we're here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My screen was changing.
I'm sharing the map, I apologize.
Okay, it's okay. I, I can hold something up too if you want. Okay, there you go. That, that would be, yeah, that's it right there. That's good enough. If you go up just a little bit further. So we can get the bottom part of the, there, okay, that's good enough. You see, there's a Y shape of the existing building and our master plan has that being mirrored to the south. And so that's the reason why we added the fifth parcel as part of this rezoning so that in the future, if we would, would submit something for zoning to add on to the, the existing facility, it would still be within the O I zoning classification. And we wouldn't have to come back for any kind of zoning changes or-
Donald, if I can interrupt real quick. Tanya, if you can go about four more pages, it breaks those specific, the, the five parcels. Keep going.
Wait a minute, let me.
It's actually the second to last page.
Can you get to page thirty-two?
It's the second to last page. There it is.
There you go.
Uh, go ahead, Don, is that helping out?
Yeah, that's okay. Um, yeah, you can see that there's four R three parcels basically centered on the thirteen fifty because that's the address for the site. And then there's a little piece that's almost like a awkward looking triangle. I'll, I'll say to the right of that, it's to the south. And that's the part that we wanted to add into the O I so that, like I said, for any future additions, we don't have to come back and, and, you know, ask for anything additional zoning. The rest of the parcel, which is, you, you can see that there's, there's still some of the R three and the R two, that's, that's our future development that if, if it even goes forward at all, um, then, then we will address that later on. But right now, we're, we're not even, we're not messing with that anymore. I know it already came before the planning commission at one time. And there was, you know, like, like somebody said, there was some opposition from the neighbors to that. So we're, we're kinda staying away from that right now. We just want to address the, the changing of the zoning of the existing parcels. Because like I said, that's what the, you know, uh, mayor, Mavis had said, that the city had not looked at originally and it wasn't zoned correctly. So we're trying to correct, get that corrected and add another piece so that we don't have to come back to you again in the future.
Mr. Hillier, the initial four minutes is up. You wanna extend that or you want to go on to it, somebody else and then come back to him?
I'd like to give her another minute, if Don needs another minute. I mean, he is the, the one proposing to the city.
The only, the only thing I wanted to say, I wanted to show you this. If you see, if you see the existing in, in dark, uh, highlight, you see a dotted section to the south. And that's completing like the, I'll say a donut shape of that. That's, that's, that's in our master plan to eventually possibly add that on. Uh, we don't have a timeline or anything like that right now, but like I said, we wanted to include this so that later on, we don't have to, uh, mess with anything at all like that.
What do, what do you see as a problem, Don, to come back in the future for that? Maybe I'm out of line.
Well, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to get the rest of that R three then rezone to O I because in an R three district, like I said, the nursing home assisted living is not even allowed in, in your zoning ordinances right now. So that's, you know, that's the reason why if we get that rezone to O I now, along with the rest of it, then we're not gonna mess with anything else O I on the, on the entire property at all.
Thank you. Anybody, um, Brian, do you wanna add anything that briefly?
Yeah, it, just if, um, there's an existing, there's an existing roadway that, that loops this, um, this area. So there wouldn't, for the neighbors, just, there wouldn't be any, he's not proposing any changes south, east or west of this sort of U-shaped roadway. So the, the rezoning, the limits of this rezoning are quite a distance from, from the neighbors. So that I think helps. And then also the, we don't, again, sort of back to our earlier conversation, this R three, we don't know if that's actually correct. We had started a process to do the legal research and to see where the R three zoning came from, but that may not be actually what the site is zoned.
And just, are you talking just the Y?
So when I came here, this was, this had a red, this was colored red and it was called unknown zoning is what I received. And so as far as we can tell, it's R three. But we've never been able to actually confirm that this is zoned R three and that the other lot is zoned R two because there's a records error. And we were, you know, gonna try to have Rob and his folks help us dig into this and we've never gotten to the bottom of it. So what this does is this cleans up a long sort of unknown chain of events. We would like to see the R two and R three be rezoned sometime in the future. But that's not, we don't have to deal with that today.
Yeah, because I think the R two that we see there in the, in the biggest piece of yellow, that's the biggest, um, concern of all the neighbors.
Yeah.
It changes zoning from residential to basically commercial. Um, so the, the Y section he's asking about on the end. So if we don't know the zoning and we're changing the zoning, are we doing something legal if we don't know what we're changing it from to something else?
Well, we're correcting it. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, is that at this time, we're correcting, this is, the building existed before it was brought into the city. And so it was constructed under the previous township zoning. And we assume that they had the proper, uh, approvals to do that. And what happened now is when it came into the city, somehow it got tagged with R three. And that's something that neither Brian nor I have ever been able to determine how that happened. And so it was clearly incorrect when it was applied here. Why or how that happened, we're not sure. What we're doing right here is making a correction because it should have been O I because of the use of the property when it came into the city.
Okay. Tanya, I can't see the screen. Does anybody have their hand up to speak in opposition or would like to?
I mean, I don't.
I do.
Um, Tanya, would it, at this point?
Can I stop airing my screen?
Yeah, I wonder if we should go back to the screen. Okay, that'll help.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Hillier, I'm here on behalf of not my, uh, my professional job as the auditor for the city, but I'm here for um, my personal self as a property owner adjacent to this land. And, um, what I wanted to say, uh, uh, Mr. Ball gave what I thought was definition to more than really what is being actually necessary to be proposed and a zoning change. And that is, uh, the four parcels of property that, uh, not including the Y shaped piece, uh, that Mr. Funk talked about as an addition. Uh, the four pieces are technically was what really needs to be corrected at this time. They have, they as a Holland group has elected to try to shove through another piece of land here for what they're proposing at some point in time to be a future development. I, I, um, I'd be, I would be remiss to think that that is really going to materialize to, to a satisfaction of the neighbors, I'm sure of that. So parcel number six, six, oh, nine, five, seven, two, that's got the extra little dot dots out around it. Um, and I spoke to this in the commission meeting. Uh, my recommendation to mission was to delete that particular aspect of this and the four parcels to the north, which is actually where the nursing home facility, um, lays i- is really what council should be looking at for this particular rezoning situation. Um, and I had, like I said, I had the same position with the commission as well. Thank you, Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Burson, I see you're in there. Did you wanna say anything? If you do, unmute yourself. There you go.
Oh, wait a minute. He, we can't hear you, sorry. Maybe turn up your volume. Is it up?
Still not hearing you. There you go.
No.
Todd, let me get back to you and if we can't get the voice out of you, you can probably call, um, Tanya, right? And then transfer it over.
Well, if I could recommend, we could also flash up on the screen the Zoom meeting information. There should be a dial-in number that he can use to dial right into the meeting.
Alright, um, and while we're doing that, is there anybody else speaking in?
I have a question, a procedural question as we're going through this. If the commission has already decided that it takes five, um,
Six.
Six out of seven to do that, if we're doing an amendment, uh, does that mean it has to be turned down, their recommendation turned down and then, as Terry suggests, come back and then, and make the other change? Is that the way it has to work, Mr. Law Director?
Yes, you would rejecting the, uh, the recommendations of, uh, of municipal planning commission. And at that point, you would then be substituting your own decision. So that requires three quarters, uh, of the members of council.
That'd take six votes in order to make a change.
Yes.
So nothing like that's gonna happen tonight because I'm only gonna give it a second reading tonight. So, um, we can discuss that further, but if I'm understanding you, if I wanna make a motion to amend it, I'd have to first motion to pass this with the thought that council will vote this down?
Well, actually, there are two ways you could do it. You could make a motion to reject the, um, the recommendations. And to reject them, that would require six of seven votes. And at that point, you could then go and posit your own, uh, suggestion, which would once again require six of seven votes.
Okay, we can move on to that, um, after this. I don't wanna take the, a lot of time we have here. Um, where? Are we getting connected with Mr. Burson? Tanya?
I don't think so.
I see he's on his phone.
Wait a minute.
There was also another gentleman that, um, had spoken municipal planning. There was a neighbor, Terry, and that man was?
Uh, that would have been, um, Mr. Dovidinsky. And he would have had similar concerns of what I had, I think, Mr. Burson. Um, because we've both, all of us in the neighbor area, um, have, um, been accustomed to, uh, Mr. Holland and the Holland group in regards to their proposals that they have submitted earlier. Um, and I know Mr. Burson has some real, um, reservations. He's over in the Landings area. So, um, and, uh, Mr. Dovidinsky is just to the back of me as well, up in the tree areas as well. So of all of us that had concerns about, about, uh, the operations, but I, I really, I, I see this as being exactly as the Holland group proposed that it needed to have and to coincide with, uh, Mr. Ball. The four parcels that are joined all in that whole pie shaped thing right there uh, is really what should be at hand for councils considerations.
Mr. Burson, I think we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear him.
Yeah, sorry about the coughing of the test. Um, I, I actually didn't have much to add to, um, Mr. Scott's comment. The big thing for me was this sounds like they're just trying to fix some, some zoning issues for, uh, existing buildings. That makes perfect sense to me. Those, that should be rezoned, but adding that triangular piece of land, um, is definitely for something for the future, which should be addressed at that time. This is all about fixing zoning issues at this time for existing buildings. That's all I have to say.
And Mr. Burson, you live in that, around that deer trace area, correct, on the map?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, he isn't adjoining, he isn't adjoining property owner. For the record.
I see a telephone on the screen. Tanya?
That's Mr. Burson.
That's Mr. Burson.
Okay. Anybody else that you can see?
I mean, not that I can tell, but any- I mean, not that I can tell, but anybody wants to speak? I don't see anybody jumping up and down, or nobody has their hand raised.
All right, so council, I'm going to start, I did attend the municipal planning. And I know the question was asked, and I asked it at the beginning here. I too have concerns with, I was at the past meeting when they were talking about this R2 property. And the concerns of the neighbors are, they've bought property such as around Deer Trace, or maybe where Mr. Scott, with the idea that it's R2 residential. And the concern is, is if we start changing the zoning of that, what's next on the lot? I personally, I fully agree with the four parcels that Mayor Mabus was asking, and Brian was asking to bring back in the line with zoning, to get it OI where it's supposed to be for the existing zoning. I feel that if there's any additions or that want to be done, I believe the term of five years possibly from now was what was used at the municipal planning meeting, that in five years, they want to come back and add on to that existing building. I think it should come back to municipal planning at that time, ask for the zoning change at that time, specifically to do whatever type of work they're going to do. My opinion only. Council?
Mike, let me just state for the record, the parcel that ends with the 2, the 2,000, is dual-zoned currently as R2 and R3. So that parcel has split zoning. It's not only R2.
Brian, is this one of the four that was originally asked to be changed, or is it the Y, what they're calling the Y?
This is the, the fifth parcel that has the Y.
Okay.
That parcel has, is also in, we don't have good records on that. It's not currently developed, and it has two zonings on one parcel.
So as an undeveloped piece, property, undeveloped parcel, does it matter at this point what the zoning is?
Well, I mean, I mean, I look a little bit more at Rob at this. I mean, we know that it's zoned incorrectly, so we, somehow it was given this R2 and R3, and we don't have records on what it is. At some point, this needs to be corrected.
So it could be corrected to R2?
Well, we don't know. I mean, it, it, it isn't, it wasn't properly zoned. So it's, just needs to be corrected at some point.
Rob?
John Francis has his hand up, too.
What's the exact question? I think Brian accurately said, I mean, this is what they seem to think for the OI part, and I'm not sure exactly...
Well, Brian questioned the fact that what zone property began with, the zoning should be changed. And I think, and my feeling is, if there's a change, it should go to R2. And if they want to add on to the building in a few years, then they come back to municipal planning, ask for a change from R2 to OI. What would be the difference?
Here's the thing, we don't know what the zoning should have been.
It's not zoned at all? Is that what you said?
No, is that the zoning map that Brian and I inherited had these as R2 and R3. How the decision was made to zone those as R2 and R3 is unknown. It's clearly erroneous from the use of the property whenever it came into the city. It's clearly, these four should have been OI. There's no doubt about it. Beyond that, what the other ones should have been is anyone's guess at this point. We just haven't had the time to dig into the old records to figure out where the error occurred.
So I guess, I guess the real question was, between Brian and me to you, was what matters is then if that just lays there erroneously till they are ready to use it, and then come ask for zoning change? John, I'll get you real quick.
Well, I, I mean, that's just a matter of, of whether we just do it now, or you could do it later. I mean, they think that this is what they're going to do. It could very well have been that this should have been all OI to begin with. And, you know, why should we make them come back? I mean, that's a political decision to be made by council.
John?
Mike, just, just what Rob said, and what I've been listening to, we don't know what they're zoned anyways. So the existing, the existing buildings should be rezoned, updated. But if there's nothing on that other piece of parcel, I'm with you, Mike. If they're going to build on it, they're going to use it, then they can come back and, and, and see if they can have it rezoned.
Mrs. Woods, do you have anything?
I'm myself unmuted here. So what basis did the municipal planning commission use to make their recommendation to us that all five should be changed?
I would suggest that municipal planning accepted the recommendations of Holland Management Group, that the initial plan was that all of this, that there's sort of half of a building, and that the original plan was to eventually add the other part. And that's what this chunk would be needed to do that. And that's why I, that's my reading of the situation. I don't have a vote of municipal planning, so I don't know exactly why they chose to do that. But that's my best guess.
I can add to that, Mrs. Woods. If you, one of the, one of the things in our, in our long-term planning is that we need housing for seniors, and nursing home housing is, is one of those things that we just need more of.
So Mr. Holland, I don't know if he reached out to any of you, but he reached out to me. And I'm not sure if it's because it's in my ward or what. But in, in that conversation, he mentioned, you know, council recently approved a tax exemption for somebody to build sort of smaller senior duplexes, and tax exempted that new project for somebody out of town, and mentioned that was what was being proposed for this little sliver of Y, not, not continuing to build on to what they have. And I'm not hearing that being mentioned here. So maybe the information that was given to me was, once upon a time, a plan, but that's the way it sounded to me, so.
If I can jump in, because we've had a couple of meetings with Mr. Holland, that is my understanding for the pieces of property he owns that are not under consideration tonight. So that R2 section, I think he is trying to develop some type of senior housing that would fit that R2 designation, so as not to have to seek a change in zoning. So that, that part where with the lemon development, where they're developing, I don't think that is apples to apples for what we're proposing for this fifth parcel.
So that's, that's the way he made it sound to me, that the reason they needed this fifth parcel was for that purpose. That, that is the way it was communicated to me.
And he called you, right?
He, he did. Absolutely, he did.
And I think this is kind of what has the neighbors in the past nervous and present. That's why I'd like to, you know, I just looked at the minutes, and the conversation was, five years from now, we were thinking about adding on to it. Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is how you said it, possibly in five years, that to add on. That's why, when you have conversations like they just did with Mr. and Mrs. Woods, excuse me, and then what we have in the minutes, I think that's what's making their neighbors nervous. They brought property next to R2 and afraid what's going to happen next, is they've tried this before.
The OI could not be used for that, the sort of little small housing without other things occurring. So now...
What does that mean, Rob?
They'd need to, we're currently, the group that's building over by Rural King off of Venture Drive, will having to go in front of Board of Zoning Appeals for conditional uses for the little housing, because of the way we've determined that's going to work. So I don't think that they could build those little units on the OI without additional paperwork, which is, but they could just continue the building of the original, sort of filling in the rest of the large building without going through additional steps.
And they wouldn't be able to do that without getting the OI designation, correct? Okay.
Samantha, anything?
I mean, no, not tonight. I'm just hoping maybe we can have another committee meeting before the next, before the vote, so we can hash through some of this, because it's complicated.
Twenty minutes, twenty minutes? We'll leave it at that for now. Tanner? Nothing? Janice? Nothing? Julia? Did I miss? Mr. President?
Hey, it's 7:20, and we said this meeting would be from 6:50 to 7:20.
I wasn't ready to end it. Did you have a comment, Mr. Hawkins, on this at all?
No.
All right, 20-minute committee meeting, and I thank you, everybody, for their time. Mr. Funk, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we are, we are adjourning the public hearing, because it was set in the newspaper for 30 minutes, and so it is over. We can't continue this at a committee meeting at our next meeting at Mr. Hillier's discretion. So we are finished with our committee meetings and public hearing. We do have a few minutes before we get into our legislative portion. Do you have anything, Mr. Scott, you want to share as far as finances, or we already heard that?
Counsel, I think you've got your monthly report now for the month of August. It did turn out just a little bit better than I had projected at your last meeting, slightly, not, not a major amount. So if you're up, up to date with that information, you're as up to date as I am. So nothing new at this time to your report, counsel.
Did we get that report? Or is it me?
Mrs. Noel, did you send that report out by chance?
I thought I did.
All right, I'll take it it was me, because I'm not getting any help from council. I'll look for it.
I'll look, Mike, too, and I can look real quick, get on and send it if I didn't send it.
And if I did, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. So we are in recess now until 7:30, we'll begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you so much for your many blessings, and how much you love us and care for us. Lord, I thank you for just this wonderful city and these wonderful people who are serving it. Lord, we pray that just in this moment, that you will grant them wisdom, patience, discernment, unity, as, as they lead this community. Lord, we are in uncertain times, but we know that you are our hope, and you will continue to guide us in these moments. So just be with us. And we pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Counsel, in your packet were the minutes from the August 24th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
Don't move, Janice.
Second, Samantha.
Janice moves, and Samantha seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both nay. They are approved. Mrs. Noel, are there any petitions or communications?
No.
Council members, you have any committee reports? I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations. We do have two people wanting to speak on matters of, of city concern. And they will have two minutes to, four minutes to speak. If they need more time after I, after I determine it's four minutes, and they want to appeal to council for another four minutes, you can do so at that time. So the first person speaking is Mr. Franklin Walter Walker. Please state your name and address, and your comments in the four minutes, unless you need an extension.
My name's Frank Walker. I live at 5 Milster Court here in Mount Vernon. I do want to bring up, for months now, residents have brought to you ideas for legislation that would ensure that all people in Mount Vernon would have, receive equitable treatment from our hard-working police department. We've received some feedback from the city council of these proposals, but these responses leave me with some concerns. My first question regards to the city council boasting about Mount Vernon Police Department policy and how it is the best. Of the five law enforcement entities in Knox County, three of them have either been certified or in the process of being certified by the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board. And according to their 2020 report, the Mount Vernon Police Department is not one of them. The MVPD policy has no mandate for consequences for even the most severe misconduct. Is this the standard that city council thinks is not only adequate, but excellent? If anybody wants to answer me, they, they can, I'd be happy with that.
See, when you're finished, we'll have an opportunity for...
All right. Also, I'd like to ask the city council if they have reviewed the proposed laws. I want to make sure that the laws are understood correctly, because I know in politically charged times, any concern about police seems to be read as anti-police, which is not the focus of these laws. My third concern stems from one that's a little more personal. I've heard from some council members in these meetings about how hard it is to deal with the concerns and emails of constituents. The reason that people reach out to members of this council is that they believe you're their representation. They believe that you want to hear their voice. If a member of our community thinks something is unjust, aren't you exactly who they should be reaching out to? If someone believes that their rights have been violated, don't you want them to reach out to you? Your statements about how hard it is to hear from them is gravely concerning as a member of the community. And if someone reaches out to a member of the city council, how long should they wait to hear a reply? That's all for me, if you'd like to, like to answer any of those questions, folks.
Mr. President? Yes. You want us to reply now, if we can, or wait, or...
Let, let's go ahead and let Andrea White talk, and then at the end of that time, you can address either one of these, these two participants. So let's go on to Andrea, and Andrea, state your name and address, and, and she wants to talk on police accountability, and then, you know, your comments in the four minutes, unless you need that extension. And at the end of that time, I'll give the council the opportunity to ask questions of either Mr. Walker or Ms. White. Andrea?
Thank you, President Hawkins, for recognizing me. My name is Andrea White. I live at 60 Wood Lake Trail in Mount Vernon. Thank you, city council members, for listening and continuing to consider the four recommendations to ordinance that have been put forward. John Francis, I want to thank you in particular for viewing the comments I made and submitted to council in July. I continue to believe that the four recommendations are necessary and fundamental for accountability of our city police force. Having listened to council's response at the August meeting, in particular, council member Woods' commentary of last month, I have even greater belief that they are necessary, and urge you to consider their adoption. I make the following comments in response in particular to Woods' commentary, and I have three main points to make. First, Woods' comment that people should just follow orders echoes what we hear so often. That is what racist media commentators say to justify the killing and brutalizing of black people, indigenous people, and people of color. Woods' comments and Scholes' agreement with them were unacceptable, and I urge you both to reconsider. We do not and cannot blame the police brutality and harassment of black people and people of color on the victims for, quote, "not following orders." Any day of the week, I can enter the search term unarmed black man into Google, limit the results to the past 24 hours, and find a case of police brutality. Today's, by the way, is Roderick Walker, a Lyft rider who was pulled by the police from the vehicle in which he and his family were passive, commercial passengers. One deputy held him down in a chokehold, smothering him while another deputy beat him. This continued in front of his children until he was unconscious. Just following orders has not saved countless black people from being killed or injured by the police. But you know what? Even when someone doesn't follow orders, or especially when they don't follow orders, we need police to not brutalize people, and we need them to be held accountable when they do. It is not the job of police to mete out justice, punishment, or otherwise. Let's remember, seventh-grade civics, our system in the United States is one of clear separation of powers that allows for careful checks and balances. It was specifically designed to keep judgment and punishment separate from arrest and detainment. It is the job of the police to arrest and detain only, not to punish by beating, suffocating, or killing, even and especially when an individual is a clear suspect. Even and especially when an obvious crime has been committed, it remains the job of the police, their sole job, to arrest and detain only. In cases where police do not follow orders, we need, sorry, I misspoke, in cases where people do not follow orders, we need police to do their job, not to brutalize people. Second, Woods cannot discount empirical research showing that police profiling, showing police profiling with anecdotes from her own family and friends. We hope Woods and Scholes' comments don't represent the rest of the administration's opinion, that local residents, teachers, parents... that local residents, teachers, parents, and volunteers' reports of racial profiling are mere accusations or that they did not actually occur. Before accusing their own residents of lying, council should gather empirical data from demographics outside of council's own friends and family about whether or not racial bias exists in policing and how best to avoid it. Those data are available and have been provided to council. We wonder whether council has reviewed those materials. Do you want more information? Would it help? Do you need black citizens to come forward to provide testimony that they indeed have been the target of profiling? Because we can ask them to do so. However, I'm reluctant to ask black people to come forward and do that when the information already exists. I would like black people in this community to continue to go about living their best lives, not having to explain their experiences of police profiling to their elected officials. It's not their responsibility to hold police accountable. It's ours. It's their job to go about living their best lives. My husband's out there in the yard taking pictures of the sunset. That's a camera he's holding, by the way, not a weapon. My son is out there running the streets. He joined the cross-country team just two weeks ago. I ordered him a hoodie this afternoon. I made a check out to the Mount Vernon jacket boosters. When you see him running the streets, he's twelve, by the way, but you will see him as a black male in a hoodie who fits the description because, as poet Claudia Rankine says, "There is only one guy who was always the guy fitting the description."
Ms. White, your four minutes is up. Do you want to ask for another four minutes or you want to just conclude?
Nope. I, could I please have another four?
Okay, I have a motion from council to extend her for another four minutes.
I have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Second, go on.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, go ahead. Another four minutes.
Thank you. We need mechanisms to hold our police accountable because there is, in the eyes of the white supremacy we have all been raised in, there is only one guy who was always the guy fitting the description. Third, there are bad cops, but we don't want them to face any legal consequences, is an irresponsible stance to take. According to Woods, she knows, quote, "There are bad cops and there are cops that know there are bad cops." Yes, this is exactly the problem. We know the problem of police brutality is cultural and a part of policing culture and that officers don't report their peers. Yet Woods said in the same breath that she will put nothing into law to punish bad behavior or even to protect officers who report bad behavior of their peers. We need council to pass an ordinance that makes police brutality and the reporting of police brutality by colleagues to be the law. We need to hold police accountable and provide a mechanism for them to hold each other accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, you now have, have heard from Mr. Walker and Ms. White. Any comments from council?
Mr. President, if I could, for one, Ms. White, I'm sorry you feel unsafe and so unsafe in the city of Mount Vernon. I have lived in, on Sugar Street for over twenty-five years and prior to that I lived on Spruce Street. And the only unsafeness I felt, and probably that's not the correct term, was when the drug addicts were dealing in front of my house or the drug addicts were dying at the end of the street. I thank God we had police officers who profiled bicycle riders that would take the handlebars off and question them what they had in their handlebars. Thank God for that, what you may call. Secondly, Mr. Walker, you probably know exactly what I'm talking about, but on the other hand, you ask about emails. I don't put a lot of weight in an email that has in it, please cut and paste, put your name in, put your address in. I don't like those type of emails when they're form emails and they're sent from groups. I like people to have their own thoughts, such as you people that are sitting here in front of me. I like to hear from you. I like to hear your own thoughts. I don't like an email that somebody says, use this email. This is what you want to say. And thirdly, yes, I have been reading the policies. I read it more than once. I've been looking at our own police policy and there's a few things I think I need to go over with the chief on that that I have questions. But I don't think cutting and pasting from California police ordinances is where we need to go in the city of Mount Vernon. We have problems. Everybody has problems. But when I hear in an email, yes, another child with autism was killed today, what street did that happen in, Mount Vernon? Let's deal with Mount Vernon. Let's not bring California police ordinances into the city of Mount Vernon. You're right. Things take time. And I, I don't think it's falling on deaf ears, but I don't think it, my problem is you want all the big changes and you're not going to get the big picture. Thank you.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for, this is for Mr. Walker and Ms. White. I've been pursuing dope dealers and pushers in a five-block radius of my neighborhood. When I started doing that three years ago, I put myself out there. So now for you, Mr. Walker and Ms. White, I haven't had one phone call. I've read the emails along with Mr. Hillier, cut posts. I don't do that. You want to talk to me about serious business, you call me. Nobody else in this city has my cell phone number. So here's how serious I am, right here, right now, seven four oh, five oh seven, one seven seven seven. If you or somebody you know is running into police brutality, racial injustice, you call me. I'll be the first to pursue it for you, first to pursue it for them. But I haven't had one phone call, not one. We do hear you. We have a new police chief. We have new administration. Six months they've been in and they're doing everything they can to straighten things up. But I'm not saying they weren't wrong, but things need updated. And we're, they're doing it. They are doing it. We're watching them do it. We're witnessing them do it. And as Mike had said, you can't cut and paste San Francisco and put it in Mount Vernon. I was born and raised here. I'm a homeboy. I know what goes on here. And I know how proud I am of our police department and the hard work they put into it. And as soon as I stood up to the dope dealers and the pushers, they were right there behind them. So you have a problem in the police department, you get a hold of me. I'll be right with you, right beside you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Salyers?
Frank, Andrea, if I could be so formal, or I guess informal. I've thought long and hard about how I'm going to handle the opportunity for citizens to speak at council and I just want to publicly say that I am not going to engage in a back and forth at council, but I do want you to get a hold of me independently. This is a time for citizens to speak to us and not for us to lambast or engage in any sort of, I don't know, back and forth with citizens. I know that Lauren Heffelfinger and several other members of council have talked about getting off and doing some coffee with council things, even if we have to do it virtually. And I think we need to get back to that because there has to be a way for us to communicate in more independent ways than this. We can't have this show up at council and clash. We have to have a more direct line of communication. We've been telling you that we're having conversations and you show up and you're like, okay, we're five months of conversations and nothing's on the table, you know? I don't blame you. So we're not going to hash this out. I'm not going to hash this out with you right here. I'm going to echo Mike and John. I don't respond to copy and paste, but I believe I've never not responded to an email that's not been addressed to me or a phone call. So contact me. You know where to find me. I think I've responded to both of you either via Facebook or email. So get a hold of me there. I'd love to talk to you independently. Thanks for showing up.
Ms. Scholes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of follow up on what Mr. Salyers just said that I do, in our roundtable tonight was planning to announce that we'll have a coffee with council on Saturday morning. So I'll talk about that later, but you know, I do know that that's an important way to engage with everyone about every kind of topic in the city and not necessarily just police reform. Thank you.
Thank you, city members and council members for.
Janice has her hand up, or well, her real hand, not the.
Oh, I see. I didn't see the whole thing. Okay, Janice?
I just want to thank Anne and Frank for coming and saying that I'm sorry that you heard that. I think we all do like getting the emails and I think that we do try to answer the ones that are more personal. And I think we all agree about the copy and paste. We get a lot of those when there has been other problems in the area. We get bombarded with those kinds of copy and paste. And so that's why, you know, we don't pay as much attention to them as you do read them, though. We do pay attention to what citizens are telling us and we do care what you say and we want to, you know, talk to you. And exactly what everybody else has said here, we do care. So I don't want you to think that we're not paying attention to you. We are. We're listening. Even though we're quiet, we're hearing you. So it might take us a while to get where you want us to get, but we're slow, but we're going to get there. We want to do it right. So, but thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. We do appreciate it.
Thank you for both the people speaking on matters of city concern and for council's responses. We're going to move on now to the legislative portion of the meeting. And you have the legislative portion in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections? Not all assume it's approved by consensus and I would ask Mrs. Noel to read these by title and number only this evening. First, we'll go to resolutions for third reading. The first one is resolution number two thousand twenty dash eighty-one. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash eighty-one. A resolution accepting the recommendations of the two thousand twenty Knox County Tax Incentive Review Council concerning parcels of commercial real property in the city of Mount Vernon receiving tax exemptions for purposes of economic development.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty dash eighty-one, please.
Moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, council. You've had this in front of you for quite a while. I think it's self-explanatory, but Mr. Scott is going to talk about it. If you have any questions, please address it to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hillier and council. Let's just take a look at the section numbers because I think that's probably going to be the, where all you're going to get your data. So section one, the TERC, which is the Tax Incentive Review Committee, did review our CRAs that we have. Right now, the Woodward Development Corporation is the only CRA that we have. During the committee meeting we had with the TERC, we were a little uncertain as to the information from the Woodward. But I do have here in my notes on eight twenty-four, Mr. Godkey did update that the Woodward Development Corporation did have sixty full-time employees. Now, this is for two thousand nineteen and had a payroll of a bit over one point two five two million dollars for two thousand nineteen. Those two pieces of information were not available at the time we had our TERC meeting, but we did get additional information. So with that, it would convey that they are in compliance and would like to have the two thousand nineteen year accepted by council. Section two are the enterprise zones. And with our enterprise zones, we have four that are on the books for the year of two thousand nineteen. That is Pisces Properties or what we would know as Replex Plastics, Ariel Corporation, Owens Corning Insulation Systems, and the Chesterland Products, which is known as Sanho Property. All of those are in compliance for two thousand nineteen. And then I can also convey to you that Pisces and Ariel Corporation at Owens Corning will terminate in two thousand twenty. Already Pisces is terminated because of their ten years is up. February of two thousand twenty, Ariel Corporation was finished in March of two thousand twenty and Owens Corning's will terminate at the end of the year. Those items also will come back to you, to council, next year again because they were part of two thousand twenty. So we'll hear from them again and Sanho then will continue on until two thousand twenty-three. Your section three talks about the three TIF districts that we have within the community here in Mount Vernon and those were reviewed and also accepted. So, Mr. Hillier, this concludes the summarization of the TERC meeting and council's consideration for continued compliance with our enterprise zones and CRAs.
Counsel, any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Salyers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Now we move to resolutions for second reading. And it's resolution number two thousand twenty dash eighty-nine. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash eighty-nine. A resolution of the city of Mount Vernon, Ohio, adopting the federally approved Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Mr. President, I'd like to give this second reading tonight and Tony, I think I asked for a twenty-minute meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty dash eighty-nine receives a second reading. Move now to resolutions for first reading. The first one is resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution two thousand twenty ninety to its third and final reading.
Second.
Can move to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. Salyers? Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis?
Move to adopt twenty twenty, resolution two thousand twenty nine ninety?
Second.
Then move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the race that are determined by the Budget Commission. You want to add anything to that, Terry?
No, Mr. Francis. There's a slight increase. It's a grand total of eight thirty-nine. It's only been increased by about fifty thousand dollars. So, and this is the inside millage or real property tax for which the city receives a small scale compared to your entire real estate tax bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody have any questions?
Ask for roll call, though. Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Salyers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety-one. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution two thousand twenty dash ninety-one. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution two thousand twenty ninety-one to its third and final reading.
Second.
Moving to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Salyers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis?
Move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty ninety-one?
Second.
And move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Francis?
President, I see that we have a line item two for the CARES Act, round two distribution. You want to touch on that a little bit, Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Francis and council. Item, line items, one and two combined is round two distribution from the county, a total of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven ninety-two oh nine. And so we have continued, we have now obviously not exhausted all that we have received in round one. But the governor did permit and allow for another distribution to all the entities. There's small municipalities, less than five hundred thousand population, for a second round of CARES Act monies and we do continue. And we do continue to utilize the, the resources that the state and the feds have sent into the city in regards to our continuation of COVID-nineteen expenditures. I can tell you, Council, we are also working very diligently on your behalf with Mr. Zick and I and others in trying to get the facilities that you know as your council's chambers back into a place where you folks may be able to come back to, or at least some may want to come back to. So we're using some of these resources to help that happen. And we hope that you guys would be appreciative of what we're trying to do for you in regards to utilizing some of these dollars. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any questions, Council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me give you item three. What should be item three? I, I, I didn't tell you about the thirty thousand dollar one. Sorry about this. Probation Department did realize another funding for their third, I think it's their third year now, for the thirty thousand dollars for mental health and recovery of licking in Knox Counties for their merit specialized docket. This is what helps support one of the person, people who are, who actually is the coordinator for the merit court, drug court program. So this, this helps, if you will, as a subsidy to, to the overall expenditures. However, this department in this area runs solely on grants and has absolutely no city tax monies provided to the programs. Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Francis.
Any other questions?
Tanner, are you done with your hand? Okay.
Mrs. Noel. Do you have a question?
I'm not done, yeah. Terry, what, do you happen to know what figure was released from the state when it comes to that CARES Act release, that second round?
I thought it was three hundred and ten million, but maybe three hundred and seventy million. It's somewhere in the three hundred, at least three hundred and fifty million, I believe it was, on round two.
So we've got another round or two coming?
Only perhaps. It's certainly at the governor's discretion whether or not they use it for the state purposes or whether they continue to distribute it to local governments as well. I think schools, did schools get distribution? Mrs. Woods, did you get some?
The K-12 did, career centers did not, and they're hopeful to get some from that third round.
There you go, okay, all right. I know that they were scattering them across different entities. And I, and I thought education was coming, coming into it, so.
Tanner, if you don't mind. Tammy, you were not, career centers were not included in that. I know we got, we got some, so you did not.
Career centers did not.
We were, we were already line itemed. I, I didn't know if that would not be included in municipality distribution or not, so. Okay.
All right. Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety-two. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety-two. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request suspension of the rules requiring three separate readings. Take resolution two thousand twenty ninety-two to its third and final reading.
Second.
Moving to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers? Okay, yeah. Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis?
Move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty ninety-two?
Second.
Moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Terry, if you want to, you can take a sip of water and then you can walk us through these line items.
Yeah. Well, yes, we've got some water that we're gonna be doing in here, so it'll fit just well. Council items one and two, we have some maintenance items going on at the water park, even though it's not being utilized. We have a complex amount of work going on. Some is warranty work that's being performed in regards to our Pebble Flex floors on our zero-grade pool and our baby pool. So we've got that going on. At the same time, we also have some maintenance work in regards to the major slides. We've got the two slides. And we've known about this for the last couple of years. But we've now got a pricing that's, that's very reasonable. We feel to get what we need to have done and ready to go for next season. We are planning that we will have a season next year by some means, if we can. Item three has to do with water supplies in regards to materials and supplies for the water office. Item four, coming in for line maintenance and repair. You've heard from Mr. Orendorf earlier about some monies that he's needing for certain other items. This is a continuation of repairs and maintenances on these lines out in the field. Items five and six, and eight and nine, all have to do with telephone. And that is because we now have a workforce. This has been a long time coming, but this has been a benefit and will be. We are now utilizing mobile data terminals in the field on behalf of the utility systems. They've got their work order program together. And this is for their air cards. They'll be able to do that. A lot of the repair work and schematic work, they'll be able to pull up from their terminals while they're in the field and determine where lines and valves and related piping and so forth is located. So we wanna provide them with some resources for their air cards in regards to those mobile data terminals. And then item seven, then for seventy-five hundred on the wastewater site for some materials and supplies as well. Thank you, Mr. Francis and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any questions, Council? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Final resolution for this evening is resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety-three. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand twenty dash ninety-three. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five point four one subsection D, then and now certification.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request suspension of the rules also, two thousand twenty ninety-three. Take it to its third and final reading.
Second.
Moving to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes? Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Rule is suspended. Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Adoption of resolution two thousand twenty ninety-three?
Second.
Moving to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a then and now, Mr. Scott. I know it's got with, got to do with the commissioners and rivers and harbors and perch hydro, sludge removal. Anything we need to know about this?
Other than the fact that the purchase orders were not processed timely, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
If I could, I didn't get my hand up fast enough, John, sorry. What is the rivers and harbors?
Rivers and harbors, the Kukocing River within the city on the banks. The county does actually do the vegetation control, and we share in fifty-fifty on that for that service in regards to the Kukocing River.
And it was completed?
Yes, by the county, yes. And then they bill us for half.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and that concludes the resolutions for the evening. We now move on to ordinances. We have one ordinance for third reading. That's ordinance number two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the reclassification of North MacArthur Street from two-way to one-way between East Chestnut Street and East High Street, allowing traffic southbound from East Chestnut Street to East High Street, erecting necessary signage to control traffic flow and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Warga?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine.
Moving to second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Warga?
Thank you. I guess my question is, Mr. Zick, have we, what kind of feedback have we gotten on this change?
All positive. So I did reach out to Justine Magg, the principal at St. Vincent School last week. Asked her what the reception she was getting from her parents and her staff were. She reported it was all positive. They do find that the new directional changes in that location is helping to make for a more efficient and safer pickup and drop-off. The only, I guess, hiccup she noted, which I did the first day when I drove by, is there did seem to be a lot of backed-up traffic on the East Chestnut Street. But when I talked to the chief about it, he indicated that even before the directional changes there, it's always been a problem of having backup in East Chestnut. One step they did take to relieve that is actually to stage two, two lanes of vehicles until the drop-off time commences. It seems they relieved it a little bit. I don't think we're ever gonna fix completely the backup on East Chestnut unless they can convince parents to come right at pickup time. But if anything, this has improved the situation over there without any, any additional harm or increased traffic issues. All of the work has been done in terms of striping and signage. The only thing we are waiting on, and I know Mr. Hinkle with our streets department is working with Greenwood Electric on installing a rapid flashing beacon on High Street where they've had some issues with, you know, with vehicles coming through there, so. Any questions for me?
I have one. Or the chief? No reports on any additional accidents or police need to be in the area, anything like that?
I'll let the chief take that.
No, we've not, no, no accidents that I know of in the area that could be contributed to the change of traffic flow. And I have had officers out there monitoring it because it is new. And the feedback I've got from them is that it's, it's actually, it's helping. It's helping. Like Mr. Zick said, it's never gonna eliminate all of the congestion issues because there are so many people coming in at one time or another to pick up students. So, but it is, it has greatly reduced the amount of congestion, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Mrs. Noel.
Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is for second reading. That's ordinance number two thousand twenty dash thirty. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash thirty. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of thirteen fifty Yawker Road from the present zoning of R-three Multiple Family District to O-I Office Institutional District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. Give this a second reading tonight.
Okay, ordinance number two thousand twenty dash thirty receives a second reading. The next ordinance is two thousand twenty dash thirty-one.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash thirty-one. An ordinance establishing the position of in compensation for Human Resources Director and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Scholes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give this a second reading tonight.
This ordinance also receives a second reading. And that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. And we'll move now on to the comments administration. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Just a few things to bring you up to speed on. Our crews have been really hard at work from the cleanup from this past weekend. And anyway, they're, I know they've gotten, there was still a lot of, a lot of debris down. And as we continue to, to work, we just, we continue to ask for patience and, you know, letting us know if there's anything else out there that our crews need to know about. So please get in touch with the, the street department on that. We indicated earlier in the, in the, the committee meetings on the, the social worker. I am, it is, it is something that we feel very strongly that we need to move in this direction or a community advocate, I guess I should say, for the police department. And I am seeking alternative funds so we don't have to exhaust our, our resources in order to make this happen. And so I do have some leads on that, warm leads I will be pursuing. And we'll, coming back to you, hopefully coming back to you with good news, so fingers are crossed. We have resumed our, the city of Mount Vernon has resumed our Friday afternoon press conference with the Mount Vernon News. And Bob Papalis is, is going to be that correspondent as of now. And so we, we welcome him to the Mount Vernon News and to the community and covering our, our stories here. Cheryl Splain is with, obviously with Knox Pages, but she, excuse me. She set up an appointment and is, is asking the city for some help with a food drive for the Byron Saunders Foundation. Byron Saunders Foundation is a group that gets together and, and provides Thanksgiving Day dinners for needy families. And so I told Ms. Splain that we would be a collection point for them. And so we'll be sending information out to everyone as here this week. So you can be looking for that information. If you, if you choose to, want to donate, I'm sure that the Byron Saunders Foundation would be gratefully grateful. Excuse me. Two other things. We, Mount Vernon honored Larry Andrajewski as the Area Five Agency on Aging Senior Citizen of the Year. Were able to see any of the stories or read about any of the, the, the coverage from last week. Larry's a very special guy, and he's, he's incredibly involved in the community. And it's always nice when you can get those regional honorees to be from your community. So anyway, we wanna congratulate Larry and all the work that he does with the jail, with, start with Knox Starting Point, with Touchpoint Family and Ministries. And is a, is a teacher for several, several years. The number of lives he has is, is remarkable, so we're very, very proud of him. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that we have met with the Health Department and are proceeding with plans for trick-or-treat this year. So that we do, we will have trick-or-treat on Halloween on Saturday, October the thirty-first. We are extending the hours. It was usually from five to seven. We are going to extend it from four to seven to allow people to space out a little bit more and not have to, or separate, I guess I should say. Not an appropriate word for Halloween. In order to separate themselves, to socially distance, if you will. It's not aimed at let the kids go out and get more candy. That's not the purpose of extending the hours, but to spread, spread out. There will be some procedures that the Health Department is providing all of the communities for trick-or-treat. So there, there will be some stipulations in order to do that. And our police department was at meeting, Safety Service Director, Zick, Zick, and then Pam Palm from the Knox Public Health was there. And so, uh, we're proceeding. We're going to have a memorable Halloween this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zick?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of items today. I did want to provide a brief response to Mr. Walker's comments from the beginning of the meeting. Uh, he did reference our absence from the Collaborative, um, Ohio Collaborative, uh, during their report for this year. Uh, I do want to stress to council that, uh, you know, becoming a member of that collaborative was one of the chief's main priorities when he started this year. Part of the reason that, uh, our membership in that collaborative was delayed was due to, you know, outdated policies and procedures. So, uh, you know, I've been in communication with the chief. He, uh, already has a date scheduled to do their assessment for that. And, um, I would expect that you'll find us in, uh, full membership or, uh, full certification with the collaborative by the time they issue their next report. So, uh, second item, and Mr. Scott touched on it, uh, we are preparing, uh, to resume in-person council meetings. Um, I just forwarded counsel an email from Health Commissioner Julie Miller, which seems to suggest that the plan, uh, I've proposed, um, will work. Just letting counsel know, I think if counsel desires, we would target, uh, the first meeting in October to resume in person for council and our local officials. Um, I would propose that we continue, uh, virtual participation by the public. Um, a couple of things you'll notice, uh, if you do visit City Hall, uh, there are barriers between every council member's seat. We've spaced out the seating in the room. The recommendations from, um, Commissioner Miller are you will, council members will have to wear their masks since we can't space six feet apart up in, uh, up in the bench. Uh, but you can remove your mask to speak. This actually is a bit timely and I was not aware of it. Uh, she informed me in her email, which I forwarded to everybody that, uh, apparently the state has just now relaxed. You know, the restrictions for governing meetings. So, uh, expect to see, um, a final plan to council within the next few weeks. And, uh, if council desires, uh, I think we do have a path where they can start meeting again in person, uh, in October. Last item on my list here is, um, there's been a lot of questions about the water billing office. You know, as you'll recall, after the closure from the pandemic, we, um, left the water billing office closed for, well, open by appointment only for a number of reasons. Uh, not the least of which is the need to create a numerous, um, stormwater accounts, uh, as well as to field questions that have just started this week as people receive their first bill. Um, also what occurred this week with the, our office staff was the first water shut off, um, since the, uh, basic, uh, suspension of water shut off six months ago, which created a, a huge workload. So over the last week or so, uh, myself, utilities director Orendorf, the mayor have been having discussions about how we're going to move forward with that office. Um, it's been a discussion in the past that there are very few utilities that have constant business hour, uh, you know, availability. Um, so we've determined that moving forward, we're going to keep the office by appointment only. Um, we are going to create a mechanism by which people can drop their payments off in the, um, in the Dropbox, the drive-through Dropbox, as well as the other drop boxes. And then as people have issues that they have to handle in person, we'll continue to take appointments for that. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Zick. Mr. Scott?
Counsel, I, uh, will give my apologies to all of you. I, while you guys were working through your legislative portion of the meeting, um, I did look into my notes and it appears as though I did update the monthly report for council, but I didn't print them. So, uh, this is Noel couldn't possibly have sent you anything. So you'll have that in the morning in your emails and I'm apologizing for the error. I guess I, updating it was good enough for me, but certainly didn't help you folks at all. So, we'll get you a report in the morning and if anybody has any questions about it, uh, you can either give me a call, stop in or send me back, uh, an email. Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Stoller?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, last week or two weeks ago during the meetings, um, and, and I usually go before Mrs. Woods, so I didn't have a chance to respond to her remarks. But, uh, I've had a lot of thoughts about the comments that are made and, and, uh, I think she couldn't have said it any better than, uh, what I could have said. And, uh, just the same thoughts I had and she said it eloquently and I appreciate that. And, uh, and sounds like the rest of the council is doing the same. So I'm really glad to see that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller. Mr. Bryan?
I have nothing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Saliers?
Yeah, um, I have, uh, a few things actually. Uh, first off, if you're, um, hating the year 2020, if you're Jewish, you only have a few days left. So Rosh Hashanah is this weekend. It's Jewish New Year. So Hashanah Tova to anybody celebrating. Second off, uh, there is a, um, I believe I, uh, had a conversation with Terry, Rick and Brian about a, uh, billing situation with the water company, uh, or with the water department. There will be paperless billing coming soon, correct? Or completely paperless billing. So that will help ease some concerns with, uh, anybody that does not want to go by appointment to the, the water office, correct?
Correct. That is correct. We will have an easy pay. So you can get text alerts. You'll be able to get emails and, uh, you can manage all of, there will be a lot of two-way interaction, uh, to be able to pay your water bill, uh, other bills, actually.
Okay. So welcome to 2020 or 5,780 if you're Jewish. All right. Yes.
Easy pay will, uh, come online first. Uh, that will be the first. If it's not already, it's coming right on. Uh, it's very, very convenient for customers to use. You can do it by a one-time thing or you can set it up as a revolving. Very easy, very interactive for the customer to use. And then we'll be updating our overall, uh, software that we have. Uh, and that again will, um, also assist in, uh, that paperless transactions. All of that can be done. Everything can be done. You can set it by email as well. Uh, the customer can, i- it's all at the customer's preference, how they would like to have their, uh, bill come to them and how they'd like to pay.
Excellent. Okay. And my next, uh, thing I want to prefer, uh, preface with, uh, I appreciate and like all of my colleagues and everybody that I serve with, but I have had this 500 pound weight on my chest that I just have to, I have to say this. You know, this year has been a strenuous year. Uh, so let me sound my barbaric yop over the rooftops of Mount Vernon here. This has been a tough year. It's not unique to Mount Vernon. Nobody anticipated this. But in a tough year, constituents look to their elected leaders for leadership. And they want to know, you know, what leadership is going to look like, uh, from those leaders. And what the business of that council is going to look like particularly. And early on this year, you know, you can walk downtown. My wife and I just took our infant daughter down, down for the first time. And as we walked around, we noticed several businesses that had shuttered doors, uh, because of, of the pandemic. And early on this year, when we anticipated this problem, uh, the area development foundation came to us with an emergency loan fund request. And they said, could you give some money to help, uh, our struggling businesses keep their doors open and their lights on? And council bickered back and forth over $10,000 to help small businesses. And we said, I don't know if that's the business of council. And then a couple of months later, 700 plus people marched around the square and demanded some, some form of police reform and government accountability. And you can have your opinions on it and people have addressed their opinions on it, sure. But we've just stared at it blankly and not taken any action on it. Because we don't know if it's the role of council, apparently. I, I don't know. We've just decided that I don't know if we're going to do anything about it. And then our newspaper, our only print media, one of two sources of news in Mount Vernon, gets bought up by an out-of-state conglomerate, uh, gets gutted like a fish. And we've decided that it's not worth a 10-minute council meeting because it's not the business of council. And then weeks ago, I asked for, uh, an election day measure that would allow members of a city employees to serve as poll workers because we have a poll worker crisis. Our own board of elections said today that there's a shortage of 166, uh, members or poll workers that if we hired three people every day from now until election day, we'd still be 16 short. And weeks ago, council said, I don't know why we do this. Doesn't seem like something that we should do. So it leads me to the question, what's the business of council? People look to us for leadership and leading means being proactive. It means addressing issues before they become messes. If you want to clean up a mess, go be a janitor. Broom. So our constituents are now looking for, for us to lead. And I think that's what we should be doing. So we have to do something, I hope from now on. When people look to us to lead, we need to lead. So that's my, that's my stress. I, I feel a little bit better now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Woods?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Ms. Scholes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Saturday, we will be having a virtual coffee with council from nine until 10-ish. I guess we'll have to see how that goes. Tomorrow I'll be posting some stuff out on social media with, um, Zoom code and a login password. So I'm hoping everyone can help share, uh, that information and help spread the word. And we'll kind of use this as a pilot weekend and see how, how that works. And, uh, figure out if this is, um, the best way for us to communicate with our constituents because certainly we do want to hear from you. We want to have a, a dialogue and a conversation with you. So let's try that this weekend and see, see where that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sebel?
Thank you. I wanted to say, uh, Columbia School got a new drive they put in on the city's property. And it is wonderful. I got to pick up my grandson there and it is so much better than what they had last year. It is safer for all the kids. And it was a great addition to that school and the safety. So the city did a great job there in helping that school be not only St. Vincent's, but they helped Columbia. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Warga?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to, uh, thank my wife. Come Saturday, the 19th, uh, we get to celebrate 38 years of marriage. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for, uh, uh, being the trooper she is, sticking it out for 38 years with me. So thank you, honey. And, uh, thank my brother for joining us. And, and I, I don't know what ID he's under, but I got texts on my phone that, uh, he's, he's been following us this evening. Just like to reiterate, uh, again, with, uh, Ms. White and Mr. Walker, uh, anybody else out there, you have problems with the police conduct, police department? 740-507-1777. I've never made that number public until tonight. You have it, call it. We could talk about the, uh, situations that you've endured or had to endure. And, uh, we, we can, we can go from there. As far as the leadership of, uh, council, uh, I think we have done a, a good job at, uh, being leaders that we are. And some may think we're not. But, um, I've been sitting in this seat for nine years, serving the people of Mount Vernon. And I've not once got a call of problems with race, creed, color in, in, in my time of sitting here. And it appalls me to have somebody tell me that my leadership is substandard, substandard. So with that, I've always reached out to the citizens of this city. But if you have a problem, you can call me. And my phone is always wrong when somebody's had problems with dope dealers and pushers. Now I'm calling out again. If you have problems, call me. I'm always open. I will always answer my phone. I will always answer my, my voicemails. But I will not have my leadership integrity liked. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Harrier?
Got it. Got it. Had unmute. Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, council, Saturday coffee of council. I am working. Feel free to give out my phone number and email address. If anybody wants to send me their actual email. Um, Mr. Scott? We've had this conversation before and I don't want to take a lot of time, but I, we don't have a lot of time. We talked about paying poll workers before, um, union contract. If, if we go, can we go tomorrow and say, who wants to work the polls and we pay you and they pay you? How's this all work?
There are provisions under the CBAs in which if you receive income from outside and get paid at the same time, then you have to turn over the, um, secondary income back to the city. That's, that's the language in the CBAs right now. It would be, uh, it would take the, uh, unions to decide whether or not they would like to propose to override that for, uh, for, uh, you know, this year for a stipulation of time, um, or how they would like for that to be progressed. But, uh, I, I've been involved in, on conversations with this. Uh, this seems to be, I think, the, probably the hardest, um, hill to get over, but otherwise, uh, and the other thing that we have, uh, I've seen in emails going around as well is, uh, the disparity among the workforce because there are some people who uh, work in a position for, you know, where there's a 24-hour staffing. So they may not be able to, uh, participate. Uh, Mr. Saliers, I think obtained information from the board of elections that indicated that, uh, you couldn't just do part of a shift. If you're going to be a poll worker, you start, uh, nearly around five in the morning till about maybe eight or so, uh, whatever the time window was. Uh, you have to fill that whole, uh, uh, duration of time. Uh, so the, the other question was, is that how does, does that disenfranchise other workers that might be interested? But because they do shift work, uh, would not be able to participate. I, I've not seen a conclusion to, um, those related obstacles at this time.
There's not an easy fix to this.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Um,
I still think if people could volunteer in, in some manner, um, if we could make that work, I think that's, that would be a great benefit to, to our entire county, really. So.
Is it possible that we, if somebody comes to, can they do it by the way it's set up? Let's say, street work, somebody works, street department comes to their, their, uh, department head and says, I want to work the polls, um, can you let me do this without having to take a day off, take, use the leave time? Is that possible?
That would be a Mr. Zick question. You'll have to direct that to him.
Mr. Zick?
So i- if this was something council was serious about pursuing, I could go to our three unions with a memorandum of understanding, uh, to proceed with letting, on a first come, first served basis, so long as it doesn't, uh, adversely affect our operations. You know, a proposal to them that they would maybe willing to accept. Uh, I, I think there's a couple of approaches we can take. Uh, you know, we, council can make a decision for any of our non-unionized workforce, if they wish, and then, uh, see where it works out with my MOUs with the rest of the union. I will say there may be a bit of a, and there may be a, a reason to not pursue this with our safety forces, just because when they take off, somebody else has to fill in for them. But we do have a, a pretty large service union, um, with only, I think, our plan operators, uh, that have to cover a 24/7 shift. And so we may be able to come up with some agreement with them if, if it's something council wants to pursue.
I could go on record right now and say, I could support. If somebody wants to take a day off without using leave and do it only for the money they get for, from the, um, board of elections and we don't pay the leave, I'll support that.
That is the proposal, Mike.
I think there's people out there that are talking, um, that would not want to pay with taxpayers' dollars for somebody to work a poll. So if they wanted to put their pay aside and work for lesser wages, most of them would be doing for the board of elections, I could support that.
That is the proposal.
And then stormwater utility, just real quick, Mr. Hawkins, I'm sorry. Is there somewhere, somebody can go online and I guess Mayor, Mr. Zick, that can, I'm getting questions from commercial, people getting billed commercial stormwater utilities because the numbers are so high. You know, I had somebody come to with a $220 bill for one property. And is there somewhere where they can go, is it, everybody treated the same here? And business, if I could, Mr. Zick?
Yeah, let me start and if Matthias wants to chime in, he can. So, you know, our consultant, uh, estimated a, an equivalent residential unit. So they took all of the residential properties in the city, uh, found what the average size of those residential properties were. And that's what. of those residential properties were, and that's what's considered an ERU. Then applied that ERU to every commercial property for all of their impermeable service, surface, so concrete, the building, that kind of thing. So they all received the same fraction. Now, every business is different. Some take up more land, some take up less. And, you know, we've, I think we, the engineering office, along with the water department's done a great job of accurately estimating that. But there is also, on the Mount Vernon website, there is a special menu for stormwater utility. It lays out those rules and regulations, but it also, if a business feels that the, the rules are being improperly applied, there is also an appeal form that is up on that site currently.
We specifically put an appeal process in the stormwater legislation after discussions with counsel whenever counsel approved it last year.
I don't think the appeal is the question from the three people I talked to, is the understanding of how they got to that number. And just last, and thank you, Mr. Zick. And last but not least, counsel, I appreciate the respect we treat each other when we speak to each other. I don't have to be called Mr. Hillier, but I do, you know, if we don't get the Miss, Mrs., Mr., we at least use a first name, and I appreciate how we do. It does sound professional, and thank you for doing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are going to go into executive session, and there will be no more action taken after we adjourn from executive session. Would like to thank the media for being here this evening. I know that Knox Pages is here. Is anybody here from Mount Vernon News? I don't, I don't recognize a name there, but, but thank you, Knox Pages, for being here. And this, and this session of counsel will be strained, is strained and can be seen by the public. The executive session actually looks like it crosses over a couple committees. We have collective bargaining and personnel discipline, and we also have sale of property. I'm not sure the purchase, sale of property, who's that is, but I'll call on Ms. Scholes to, to a call for a motion to go to executive session for all three of those.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters, purchase or sale of property, and personnel discipline.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Was that Tammy? Mr. Salliers?
Yes.
Ms. Scholes?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebel?
Yes.
Mrs. Warga?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
We are in executive session at 8:41. Ms. Scholes, who did you want to be on executive session in the administration?
Chief Morgan, Mayor Starr, Mr. Zick, Mr. Warren, Mr. Scott, and later on, we'll need Mr. Ball. I think that Mr. Zick is going to contact him when we're ready for Mr. Ball.
Thank you. We are in executive session at 8:41.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to get you all in a breakout room here. Give me just one moment.
Rick?
Yes.
Is that drop-off box there now for the water department to pay to his bills?
So there is a drop box there, and Mathias and myself are going to work on a, a new drop-off box for the drive-through.
So what should I tell the citizens that have called me and written me?
I will get our plan together, working with the mayor and Mathias, and I'll send you the plan. So it might take a day or two.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Tanya, if you may be a host, I can finish the meeting for you.
I'm missing Brian, so you'll have to put him on.
Yeah, he, he dropped. I'll text him later and get him in here.
Rick, I'm getting there. Hold on one second. I gotta find you.
Still here, Tanya.
What's that?
I'm still here. Do I get to join their club?
Yeah, you should have been. Oh. Thank you.
Nope. There we go. Yep.